All right, I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for October 22nd, 2024. So today we have Pastor Steve Redden from Crosspoint, gonna do the invocation, and I'll do the flag salute. Would you please stand?
Thank you for the privilege of being here. Just want to say way to go, first of all, this city here. Three or four months ago, we had a big challenge with real estate and zoning, and emailed somebody here, and Christine Namco got back to me and put together a meeting with Scott Cooper, Betsy Lowry, and Tanis. They were fantastic. So way to go. What a great team you have here. Tanis in particular, that woman deserves a pay raise and a promotion, but put that on the agenda, whatever. Thanks, guys. So God, tonight, we gather here together recognizing you, first of all, as the one who's ultimately in charge, coming under your authority. Thank you for the men and women who serve this city that I love, that we love so much here and do it so well. All the big public things they do, and all the quiet, simple, unnoticed, private things they do to make this city so great. Give them the kind of next level wisdom you gave Solomon in the early days of his reign over your people. And then for the particular items that are on the agenda tonight, just invite you to sit here at the table with us to lead and guide in all those. Amen.
Thank you. Would you please join me in saluting our flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm Adam, city clerk. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander is absent. Mayor Protem Kelfis-
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk-
Here.
And Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight we have several presentations. The first one is gonna be a proclamation for Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and I believe we have the TVHS Cyber Patriot Club here. Could you please come forward?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation.
Yeah.
Whereas the city of Temecula recognizes that it plays a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact to safety and privacy. And whereas cybersecurity education and awareness are crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet. And whereas monitoring your accounts, being conscientious of what you share online, keeping computers, software up to date, creating unique passwords and changing them regularly, installing antivirus programs and firewalls, and using mobile devices and other internet connect devices safely, are ways people and organizations can protect themselves from phishing, viruses, ransomware, malware, financial loss, and loss of sensitive data. And whereas we showcase the need to inspire, engage, and inform the public about the demand, opportunities, and career options available within the area of cybersecurity. And whereas we dedicate ourselves to provide every individual, public and private organization in the city of Temecula, the resources necessary to ensure the understanding, implementation, and success of cybersecurity. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play. And awareness of essential cyber hygiene will improve the security of the city of Temecula's information, infrastructure, and economy. Now therefore, Mayor James Stewart's on behalf of the city of Temecula hereby proclaim the month of October 24th to be Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Congratulations.
All right, so would you guys tell us a little bit about the Patriot Club?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Come closer to the mic. There you go.
We practice and teach all of our members about cybersecurity, safety, good methods of how to keep people safe, both on their computers and online. We try to not only extend that to our members in our school, but everyone within our community. We actually have this, our first competition this Saturday, so we've been training for the last two months for that, so we're pretty excited.
Okay, very cool.
Thank you.
Now, didn't you guys win something already? Did you guys win something?
Two years ago, yes, we did win the Mayor's Cup.
Okay, all right.
Very big honor. We're hoping again for this year.
What's that? Oh, that's the Mayor's Cup right there?
Yeah.
All right, very good. So you're gonna try to win it again, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. All right, anything else to add to your cybersecurity? Oh, go ahead.
I had a question. You mentioned you were gonna do a competition. Can you just maybe take a minute or two and explain, like, what does that mean in this cyber patriot world? Like, what does a competition look like?
Of course, yeah. During these competitions, we are given virtual computers. These computers have manufactured flaws in them, and we have to go in and repair and fix them. For every vulnerability that we fix, we receive points. This is done nationally. Everybody, every school, high school, colleges, middle schools, compete in this competition. So we are going in and fixing flaws also preventing future attacks on that virtual computer.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
And so how many kids, how many schools take part in these events?
It's across the US.
Oh.
We, there's a lot.
Okay, so it's not just regional. It's like all across thousands. Very cool. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Their proclamation is right there on the table.
Oh. All right, thank you, guys.
There you go, get 'em.
And now, now we have another certificate of achievement. You'd like to read that one?
Yes, and this is for Matthew Dewitt. The city of Temecula recognizes Matthew Dewitt of Temecula Valley High School for earning the Congressional Award Gold Medal, Congress's highest honor for civilian youth. To earn the Congressional Award Gold Medal, each participant must complete at least 400 hours of voluntary public service, 200 hours of personal development, and 200 hours of physical fitness over the course of at least 24 months. Additionally, they must spend at least five days and four nights exploring a new environment or culture. Matthew completed several scouting-related projects, including his own Eagle project at Temecula Middle School, flag retirements, blood drives, trail cleanups, and several other activities that earned him 25 scouting merit badges. The city of Temecula congratulates Matthew on his achievement and wishes him continued success in future endeavors.
Wow, that's pretty impressive. When she listed off all the things you did for this, it's like, you deserve it. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I'd like to thank the city council for inviting me here to be recognized for my achievement. I'd like to thank my parents, my validators, and especially my advisor, Mr. Chris Seismar, for guiding me on this two-year journey. Like, when I earned Eagle Scout, the Congressional Award is a journey, but it doesn't end at the final tier. It is not over just yet. I look forward to continuing to grow as a leader and continuing to serve my community, my school, and my church for as long as I remain in the city of Temecula. Thank you.
While they're taking photos, I just have to reiterate what they said. 400 hours of voluntary public service, 200 hours of personal development, and 200 hours of physical fitness. That is pretty impressive, Matthew. So continue to serve, continue to challenge yourself, continue to stay motivated. And like the award said, you did not win this, you earned it. Congratulations, Matthew.
All right, so now we're off to a presentation by Rancho Water regarding the Deportola Construction Update Project.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Casey Yarm. I'm the Construction Contracts Manager for Rancho Water District. I want to thank you for the opportunity to update you on some exciting projects that we have going on, particularly up what we call the Upper Valle de Los Caballos region, which is just off of Deportola Road, just east of Papa Road. So Rancho Water is actually one of the largest import water retailers in the western Riverside County. We're only second largest, we're the second largest, only second to Eastern Municipal Water District themselves. The district is advancing local water supply projects to enhance the resiliency of the region. As you know, water is one of the most important resources that we have, and with the recent droughts, it's becoming more and more prevalent to upgrade our, what we do have, to make sure that we have sustainable and reliable resources. Our goal with these projects is to decrease our reliance on treated import water. Some of the strategic projects that we have going on, so like I mentioned, the Upper Valle de Los Caballos, that is an extremely valuable asset here in the region that we have, that most other agencies don't have. They import most all of their water. We have a resource to our disposal, bless you, at our disposal to use and enhance our resources. What are our goals and why are we putting so much effort in? Well, our strategic plan goal, which is to provide a safe, resilient, and sustainable water supply portfolio that achieves an optimal balance of water resources. This region is fortunate to have that groundwater basin to utilize and make our goals a reality. So what do we have going on? We have quite a few construction projects, all in the same area, and I'll get to that in just a minute, but what's the purpose of that? So a groundwater recharge program. So we have the Upper Valle de los Caballos region, which we use to put treated water into the ground to recharge our basin to use, to pump out of the ground and use at our disposal. This maximizes our groundwater storage, increases our resiliency and reliability, and reduces our reliance on expensive treated imported water from outside our region. The groundwater basin has provided a large bank for us to use. This increases our resiliency, sustainability, and is a more reliable source of water. This significantly reduces our costs of expensive treated import water and helps keep our water rates down. We also have the Veil Dam. As everybody's aware, the Veil Dam's been there for quite some time, but the forties. Currently, it does not meet the seismic standards and thus has to be rebuilt. Or actually, we have to build a new one because the new one doesn't meet those standards. So the construction projects I'm talking about, so on the map you see there, that's what we call the Upper VDC, Upper Valle de los Caballos area. There are several projects going on, and they're all related to one another. We're gonna equip, we're gonna drill and equip four wells. This is four additional wells on top of the six wells that we currently have in the recharge basin. What these wells do is they allow us to actually take that water out of the ground, treat, and then put into our system. We have a pump station that we're gonna build because in order to get that water out of the ground, once we get in the ground, we have to put it into the system. In order to do that, we have to put in a brand-new pump station, which will pump that water into two of our major pressure zones. With that pump station includes a chlorine contact tank. This chlorine contact tank is what allows us to disinfect the water to make it safe for people to consume. In addition, we're gonna add a hydroelectric facility. This hydroelectric facility will offset about 40% of the consumption of electricity by the wells and the pump station itself. You know, in addition, when we build these wells and we build a pump station, we actually have to build pads. We have to build the pads up at a higher elevation than the existing ground surface, and that is to keep it out of the floodplain area. So if you go out there now, you'll see that the pads themselves are about 10 feet tall. The reason for that is to keep it out of the floodplain. And obviously, we have the construction of the Veil Dam, which is set to begin. Hopefully, at the end of next year, we'll get that out to bid. That's a major, major construction project for our district and our community. So what are the timelines we're talking about? So right now, we've actually just finished building the pads for the wells. We had to build two pads for two new wells because, again, they were at existing elevation. We had to build those up. What's next is we have to drill them. There are three wells that we have to drill. That contract's actually out to bid right now, and we expect the drilling to occur sometime around February, March of next year. Once we drill them, we have to equip them. So that contract also is out to bid right now, and we expect the equipping to occur shortly after the drilling because of procurement times to get the piping and the pumps. The pump station, actually, that contract has already been let. Pac Hydro is the contractor, and they just mobilized this week, this last month, and so they will actually start real work with, you know, groundwork and excavation and grading beginning next month. Their first order of work is to begin work on the chlorine contact tank because it's about 20 feet below grade. So we'll start there and work our way up. The hydroelectric facility, that was awarded, and that construction is expected to begin around spring of 2025. The Veil Dam, that project is going through some of the permitting processes right now. We expect to go out to bid for that project, hopefully at the end of next year, with construction starting the year after that. So why am I here? I really am here to let the community know about some of the possible impacts that could occur by all this construction. It is a lot in one area, and it's all at one time, but we are doing what we can to reduce those impacts. We are installing sound curtains or sound blankets at the perimeter of our property, both on the east and west perimeters, and that just really reduces the amount of noise from the construction to the neighboring area. You know, there's obviously wineries and horse ranches and things of that nature, so we're doing that. We're also installing those around the well pads, so when we do the drilling of the well pads, obviously, the noise of that. So we are installing sound blankets and sound curtains around those as well to mitigate that noise. The utilization of existing materials on site. So the original plan for the pump station, there's 45,000 yards of dirt that have to be imported to build the pad for the pump station. That was originally slated to be imported, meaning that it was gonna come via truck, via the roads. You're talking about 7,000 truck trips on Temecula Parkway and Deportola Road. After reconsidering what our options were, we actually decided to use our onsite material and do a borrow pit. So now, all that dirt's gonna be taken from our own property and put on there, so there'll be no, we've eliminated seven, those 7,000 truck trips on the road. So it's a big accomplishment, just really good for the community and the roads, obviously, itself, to get that many trucks off the road. We're coordinating with and regular updates to the city of Temecula and the county of Riverside. We have a dedicated webpage. Our website is ranchowater.com/vdcproject. We're doing updates through existing newsletters and mailers. We have future town hall meetings for community updates planned. In addition, we have a 24/7 bilingual hotline to answer any construction questions, and we're coordinating with other agencies on their projects to reduce congestion. Eastern Municipal Water District has a sewer line that they're planning to construct along Deportola Road in front of the wineries, right in front of our property, as well as the county of Riverside is doing some drainage improvements right across the street as well. So there's quite a bit going on, so there's a lot of coordination effort that must occur with all the agencies there. Some of the other community considerations. Obviously, there's gonna be additional traffic along Deportola Road, possibly Temecula Parkway as well. So again, I talked about the utilization of the existing material on site rather than getting those trucks off the road, reducing the number, the impacts of those trucks. We're also, you know, we're putting up signs. We have project signs out, we have cautionary signs out, and there will be even more added. But it is important to note that out there along Deportola Road, that there is gonna be loud, sudden noises and ongoing noises as the project continues. It won't be, you know, there's not, you know, any, like, huge equipment with any real large banging, but the drilling is a constant noise that occurs, obviously, the equipment and the construction of concrete and rebar. There is an equestrian trail that's very active that goes right through our property, so we've made sure that we've had community meetings with the equestrian groups, letting them know what to expect. We've also placed the signs out on the equestrian trail at multiple locations, so that no matter where you enter the equestrian trail, you see the signs to just be aware that it is an active construction site, and there's potential for trucks and equipment blocking the trail, as well as uneven ground or holes, and obviously, the noise. We don't want anybody getting hurt on their horses. So again, it's just be aware. We want everybody to understand that it is an active construction site probably for the next two to three years. It's gonna be quite busy. And so we continue to, you know, do as much as we can, look at alternative methods to reduce the amount of impacts that we possibly can have on the projects. I'm gonna turn it over to Rob Rosine. He's gonna talk about our outreach and communications.
Thank you, Casey. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As we determined our outreach strategy for letting folks know about these construction projects, we want to make sure that we had information available for everyone. As you can see on the screen, it's a very broad audience that we're trying to reach, but we want to be able to target those audiences and provide that information that they need. So as they're interacting in the area, whether it's visiting the wineries or using the horse trails, they have that information about what's going on and when it's going on at the construction sites. We absolutely want to be good neighbors in the area. The work is being focused on Rancho Water property, but that doesn't mean there's not gonna be some traffic impacts and sound impacts in the area. So we want folks to be prepared and be aware of what's going on out there. We're also gonna make sure we communicate and collaborate with our partners at EMWD, as well as county of Riverside, as their projects are going on over the next six months or so. We want to make sure that, you know, we're not stepping on each other's toes, and people have that information for that as well. Some of the ways that people can find out more information, we do have a bilingual 24/7 hotline available. That phone number for folks is 951-612-1841. We have cards available in the back for anyone that would like some more information. That's gonna be available for anyone who has questions about the project. If you're driving around, or you see a truck out in the area, and you want to know what's going on, please call that. If you have any concerns, please also call that number as well. That'll actually put you in touch with Casey or myself, and we can address those issues as well. We're also gonna be posting on several of our digital platforms, social media, we have an e-newsletter, and the website that Casey alluded to earlier, ranchowater.com/vdcproject. That's gonna be a hub of information for folks to visit, and that'll have updated timelines and regular updates on everything that's going on out there at the site. We're also gonna be providing site tours as we get rolling this construction. We started groundbreaking, thank you, Mayor Purcell, for coming out to that. And one of the site tours, I think, was one of the more effective tools we had out there for folks to actually get that behind-the-scenes look of what's going on out there at the project site. With that, we're also gonna be increasing our video updates as well for anyone who's not able to make it out to the project site to be able to tune in and see a behind-the-scenes look of that construction and what goes into creating, you know, the small inline hydroelectric facility that we're gonna be putting in there. So actually, I'm gonna wrap up with one of our videos, our first video updates here. This is actually a recap of our groundbreaking ceremony last month.
By leveraging this innovative, multi-phase approach, Rancho Water not only secures a more reliable water supply for the southwest Riverside County, but also ensures better water security for all the residents living in the region for years to come. California's groundwater basins are a crucial source of water supply for more than 15 million people, with some communities 100% relying on groundwater.
As we all know, water's fundamental to our daily life and maintaining the quality of life that we all enjoy. These new wells are a strategic investment in creating the necessary flexibility to store the raw water in wet years, and it will bring long-term benefits in the form of water storage that will lend itself to water security in the region.
The system we have for the last 100 years that have served us is not going to serve us for the next 100 years. That means investment into water infrastructure and all the other infrastructure that we need, especially in growing areas like this, and to supply water to consumers, to have this great industry that we call wine country. All of those things depend on us doing our job to make sure we have water.
Today, we are talking about a significant step with the construction of an inline hydroelectric facility that will generate up to 4.3 million kilowatts of clean renewable energy, translating into substantial energy savings and long-term sustainability. Rancho Water is consistently working. On behalf of its customers, this project is just one testament to their hard work. Before we know it, we'll all be here again with a ribbon and some really big kisses.
So with that, I'd like to thank you guys for having us here this evening to give you the update, and we're available for any questions if you have any.
You have any questions?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, amazing job. All right, so now we're off to board and commission reports. So Community Services and Mr. Chair Jeff Kingsburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council, staff, and attendees. Community Services Commission met last Monday, October 14th. All five commissioners were present, and you can see our personnel listed on the slide. Getting you to the highlights of the meeting, we first had a presentation on workforce development from Charles Walker, Community Services Manager, and also staff member Abby Solis. And we were briefed on the wide array of programs that the city offers our youth to develop work and career skills, and you can see some of those things listed there on the slide. I think a big thing is obviously working with employers to facilitate externships for students who have successfully completed CTE pathway programs, and we also have an incredible internship program as well. The success of the annual Young Women's Career Conference was highlighted, and with that, normally in December, now in 2025, the city will be initiating a, Charles shared, a young men's career conference to begin next year as well. Second, we had a presentation from Temecula Public Library Manager Ginger Sastrum. She has a 49-year career so far in serving public libraries. Very impressive. She shared some successes and some challenges, starting with successes first, and again, many of those are listed here on the slide. We are by far the busiest of 35 libraries in the county system. We have a monthly circulation of more than double any other branch, and our library has nine weekly storytimes for young readers. As far as challenges go, she cited that there's been, you know, again, the last few years, quite a bit of staff turnover. Also, the library has had to deal with scrutiny of various materials and efforts to ban books. Additionally, with increased mental health issues across the nation, and sometimes in our city as well, managing loiterers and homeless who may use the library as shelter. So we just, as a commission, hearing all that, we just would like to ensure that we, as a city, are providing all possible supports to keep the library the crown jewel that it truly is. And then we got into our division reports, and we heard about Community Services and Recreation. We heard from Marcus Hayes, who is a senior recreation leader. You can see the numbers monthly for the aquatics and the overall classes, highlighting as far as special events go. Over 3,000 participants in special events, the Fit Color Run had over 900 participants. You can see it was quite colorful there, as shown on the slide. Oh, and also, we had our own Commissioner Castro was a participant at the Fit Color Run, so kudos to him. And then, our second division report was on community outreach and cultural arts, and that was provided by Sergio Raya, who is the new Community Services Manager at the Temecula Valley Museum, replacing recently retired Tracy Frick. And you can see on these slides, one highlight as far as community outreach for special events was the Annual Health and Resource Fair, which had over 1,000 attendees. The museum had well over 2,000 people involved. The museum over the month, it was up 18% over September the previous year, and you can see the picture is actually from the Ralph Plain Air Competition Awards on September 20th, and three commissioners, Commissioner Seismor, Vice Chair Hawks, and myself, all attended and spoke to attendees at that event. And the third slide shows the Old Town Temecula Community Theater had over 3,600 attendees. So as far as recapping everything, we approved our action minutes from the September 9, 2024 meeting. It was unanimous 5 to 0 vote. Our next commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 11, 2024. That will be canceled due to the Veterans Day holiday. However, the patriotic salute to veterans event will be held that night at the Civic Center. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we're off to the Ready Commission with Vice Chair Crystal Pistorian.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and attendees as well. So I'll be reporting on this last commissioner meeting. As you know, the Ready Commission is made up of seven residents who serve together as an advisory group to this council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. And our last meeting was October 10th. During this meeting, we received a proclamation on Hispanic Heritage Month and presented the related- and presented the related proclamation. The presentation included the following: introductory comments from Chair Faulkner and video outlining the importance of the celebration; presentation by Chair Faulkner regarding the census data and historical information; video message from Supervisor Washington and Supervisor Perez; the reading of the proclamation by Chair Faulkner and public comments that evening. In addition, we received a presentation regarding the November 5th general municipal election. Staff provided an overview of the information that's available on the city's election webpage and the attached postcard, which was sent to the city's approximately 41,000 residential addresses. This information is part of the city's regular efforts every election season to provide information to residents regarding when, where and how they can vote. Related social media posts have also been completed. City Hall and other city facilities also serve as a ballot drop-off or in-person voting locations for upcoming elections. Our next commissioner meeting will be held on November 14th here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. And we will be celebrating the National Native American Heritage Month and we invite everyone to attend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, Public Safety Report with Captain Durham.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Team and City Residents, good evening. As you can see, in the month of September, your deputies are busy. They handle just over 5,500 calls for service. That's approximately 185 calls per day. Part of these calls, next slide, please, are the ongoing issues with e-bikes and e-motocycles, particularly though there's an increase of calls for service and citizen concerns at our parks. The city of Temecula has built beautiful parks. They maintain absolutely amazing parks. And these e-bikes and motorcycles are going to tear them up. And so I will increase enforcement efforts. I still encourage parents to get involved, set expectations for how their kids ride their e-bikes in the parks to make sure they're not using those powerful motors to tear up the turf, that they're mindful of pedestrians and people pedaling and the games that are playing. But this one in particular is an e-motorcycle and it has no business anywhere in the city on a public roadway unless it's licensed, registered, insured, and the person has a valid M1. But we will continue our enforcement efforts and make friends with these kids if they don't start following the rules. That ends my Public Safety Report and I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you for your Public Safety Report. All right, so now we're off to Public Comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do. We have seven public comments under non-agenda items and each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Jorge Bustos, to be followed by Melissa Bourbonnet.
My name is Jorge Bustos and I have lived in Temecula before that seal was created, 1988. And I have worked in here since 1991. I came as an immigrant to this country in 1974. An immigrant with dreams and desires to work and prosper if given the opportunity. The opportunity was here and I have worked and paid taxes since 1974. As an immigrant, I'm still working and benefiting from the opportunities our country offers. As a citizen since 1984, I'm a registered voter and I vote in every election. As an immigrant, I had never used a free service or benefits from our government. Now, because of my age, I do have Medicare and Social Security and I enjoy and benefit from. I have paid unemployment taxes, employment taxes to Social Security since 1974. I still do every two weeks with my salary. In healthcare, I pay private insurance individually for 40 years. I am here because my life in this country, similar to many immigrants that I know and you probably know also. The trash talk of a group of political motivated individuals that want to picture immigrants as a plague, as abusive of our systems, as plain animals, as poisonous to the clean blood of the white Americans. This is sickening to me and many friends, immigrants or not. I have lived and worked in this city since 1988. Before it was a city, I had not been arrested or charged with any crime. I have different opinion with many people, some of them my own patients. But it's a beauty, this is the beauty of our country. I tell my patients, when they're wearing the red hat or wearing the wrong t-shirt, this might hurt a little bit more. That's a joke, of course, and they take it like that. The answer is, I knew it was going to rile you. Then we get to work and a few months later, I see them again. And that, again, is the beauty of our country. I don't want this to ever end. I love this country and what it stands for. Freedom to do and work in what you want. Freedom to have different opinions without being personally threatened. I thank this country for letting me be here, work here, to have a family here, a beautiful wife, two daughters and a granddaughter, to have a home here. This is a moment in history, history will record it. And I will defend these blessings with my vote. I hope you do the same. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Melissa Bourbonnet, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Hi, my name is Melissa Bourbonnet and I am here on behalf of Upward Community. We represent the local workforce and advocate for attainable homeownership. We also like to hold our elected officials accountable for their actions, their words, and oftentimes their inactions. So Mayor, I was not here unfortunately on September 24th, but I did listen to the comments that you made. You did visit Warehouse, which was appreciated. Warehouse is an affordable housing complex in Councilmember Schwank's district. I don't think you've been there, but I know that you recently visited. Your focus was the exterior, which is adorable for sure. We'll agree with you on that point. But once again, or our perspective is that you kind of have missed the whole point. All of you, well, Alexander is out tonight, but Alexander, Brendan Calpus is an exception because he's done a ton in terms of taking action to help promote affordable housing, to help represent the workforce. But Alexander hasn't. Of course, you chose not to appoint somebody. So there's 20% of the population or the constituents in Temecula that isn't even represented because that's a vacant spot. You seem to be interested in words more than anything and I'll leave you to Laurel. But it seems as if all you do is just... Let me count the ways that we can disagree with Laurel and Melissa. It's personal. It's clearly personal. It's not about housing. It's not about solutions. It's not about the workforce. It's about doing everything you can do to prove Laurel and Melissa wrong. So you talked about how Warehouse is secure, but you didn't mention how that security, the way it's designed, the tenants, they don't have, they can't receive deliveries. Like they have to be home to receive deliveries. Otherwise, they can't receive deliveries. And delivery people will routinely leave packages on the sidewalk, on the public sidewalk. The fact that it's secure is helpful, but beyond just the exterior and the cute sort of New York style to it, the windows reverberate because it's over bars. The packages get stolen because they get left out on the sidewalk. It's not really about how it looks, even though it's adorable in Old Town. It's about how the tenants are treated and about you just dismissing what we say because you want to prove us wrong. There's six complexes where people can earn 51 to 80%, six, to be continued.
Next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Love Bailey.
Zach, I just want to go over some Zach facts. What is Schwanky Town? What does that look like? Is it an elitist group of people that support a representative that does very, very little for its, let's say, nothing for its workforce and the fight for attainable homeownership? You called yourself an attainable housing advocate during a parade. What have you done to earn that title? You're a block. You copy and paste city staff words. You haven't been to Warehouse at Creekside. You haven't bothered to meet the owners or talk about what we can do to renegotiate contracts to help the workforce not be evicted. Or we can play semantics and say the lease has come to an end, but we will be forced out, which is essentially an eviction. You voted against term limits and putting it on the ballot. You were the one out of everybody up here who opposed term limits for city council. So you can sit up there and do more of nothing. You voted to postpone SB 9. You went to Japan on the city's dime. You don't acknowledge your constituents that come here and ask for your help. Who was it who acknowledged that the tenants in your district in affordable housing couldn't park during city events? Was it you? No, it wasn't. It was me. Lived experience. So a facade of a building looks pretty. It looks kind of like New York. But without lived experience, do the tenants matter when you want to host a fancy event for everybody else in town? We got to go to work. What about the refunds of the illegal parking fees? What about the windows that leaked? Were any of you, were you specifically Zach Schwank, part of that resolve? Or even figuring out that it was a problem in the first place in your Schwanky Town? What does it look like for the workforce? Do we get to live in it?
Next speaker is Love Bailey, to be followed by Ashley Greenwood.
Citizens of Trans-Mecula. Today, we celebrate the banning of the mandatory outing policy, a victory for LGBTQ people restoring justice and human decency. Let us not forget the damage of over $1 million in lawsuits that could have gone to educating our students. We know that this policy was unconstitutional. Yet why is Councilmember Jessica Alexander still endorsing school members who put those corrupt policies in place? Because of this policy, queer youth were bullied and forced into dangerous situations. Many were left homeless with no support. Meanwhile, closet case Karen Alexander has the nerve to go on social media telling people not to help the homeless, but to call the cops instead. And to think her campaign online says she strives for unity and to treat others how she wants to be treated. The hypocrisy! Maybe we should go around telling people she's a groomer and a pedophile and then call the cops every time she needs a helping hand. Do you see the logic here? You see, we have to coexist in this fucked up town. No matter what race, gender, sexuality or religious creed, we all have to get along. You may not like us, but you will respect us. And furthermore, you have to represent us. We will not be scared back into the closet by some fascist evangelicals. We are here to stay, baby. Learn it, love it, live it. And that's why I will be voting for Eric Faulkner to replace Ms. Karen Alexander, Kamala Harris for president. And for the love of God, leave queer people alone. Do you understand what I'm saying? Hello? Are you listening?
Next speaker is Ashley Greenwood, to be followed by Joseph Austin.
Honorable Members of Temecula City Council, my name is Ashley Greenwood. I stand before you, a welcome daughter of California, a proud black woman and a citizen that believes in the fundamental right to live free from fear, judgment and shame. But tonight I stand here for children. Children who, like many of us, are just trying to figure out who they are in a world that often tells them that they don't belong. I know what it's like to be made feel small, to feel as though your identity is something to be hidden, to be feared. Growing up black here in America, I have learned very early on what it meant to be vulnerable to the cruelty of others and to be judged for something I couldn't change. And I made it through because I had a community and people who loved me and let me find my own way to become who I was on my terms. But for so many queer children here in our community, that right is being taken away. This council has chosen to implement a policy that outs these children, revealing their gender and their sexual identities before they are even ready, before they have even had a chance to fully understand themselves. A decision that is in violation of their most basic constitutional right to privacy, a right that the state of California has already declared must be protected. This isn't a policy issue. This is a matter of life and death. So let me tell you what happens when we force children in the open before they're ready. I have spoken to kids, just teenagers, who were outed, thrown into the fire of rejection without warning. Some were kicked out of their homes. Others found themselves sleeping on park benches, in shelters, nowhere at all. 40%, 40% of homeless youth in this country is identified as LGBTQ plus. And we know why. Because they're rejected by their families, abandoned by the people who should have protected them. And in a blink of the eye, they can go from being someone's child to someone's problem. And what future are we offering them? The TRA project tells us that our queer youth are already four times more likely to commit suicide than their peers, four times. That's not a statistic. That's children. That's real children in our community who are being pushed to the brink. They don't need more judgment. They need compassion. They need support. They need to grow into who they are. Temecula is a city of values and a family community. But what kind of community are we if we abandon our children at their most vulnerable? What kind of family turns its back on a child in need? But it is not too late. You all have the chance to choose compassion over fear. You have the power to protect, not harm. These children aren't asking for much. They're asking for the right to grow to who they are in their own time and in their own way. They're asking for a chance to be loved. I urge you to rethink these policies that you have, not because it's politically expendient, but because it's the right thing to do. These children are our future, so let them have one. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joseph Austin, to be followed by our final speaker, Mark Laterno.
Hello. I've prepared a speech here. Hello, my name is Joseph Austin and I've come back a second time to speak about life in Temecula, California. Today, I'd like to discuss with the panel about continuing fabrication of issues and complaints. For one, my mother-in-law is a tenant at Aubrey Place in the southeastern side of Temecula, near Morgan Hill, off of Butterfield Stage Road. I was just told that she had been harassed by the HOA specifically today about having her garage open while cleaning and they said it was an eyesore of sorts. And I know better than that. Her house is not a hoarder's house, so that can't be the real issue. The real issue here is favoritism and coercive threats upon people they do not favor. I don't know what people's problem is, but I know that my beautiful city of Temecula has not always been this way. We used to be able to walk freely and live respectfully up until recently. Not only this, but with many other issues of harassment and human degradation being a prime factor in why the city is becoming a hateful elitist city. I have experienced many different issues such as gaslighting and intimidation from the community. My lawyer has also explained that this is in fact a... My lawyer has also explained that this is in fact a thing, and I am not off the mark. Another thing I have noticed is when I have requested for officer contact, no matter the polite conduct I have displayed, I still seem to be unaided in my need for their help. Yet I have witnessed an overtly vulgar display of power upon me when I have been unconstitutionally trashed past from places I have become a loyal consumer of, like Starbucks, Smart and Final, Walmart, and storage facilities. I have a complaint about illegally being threatened arrest for being within my rights by Deputy Orez and other deputies, yet they want to continue to coerce, threaten, intimidate me, knowing full well I am within my rights and I'm not giving any legal reason for the bullying and vulgar display of power. I have audited and complained, and now I speak on a local broadcast about this issue. Today, I am 28 days clean from medical cannabis, and I'm proud of myself. I have been told it isn't possible, yet I'm doing what I envisioned for myself still. I am a work in progress, but I'm speaking up on behalf of the fact that I am in constant threat of my freedom for unlawful reasons, and this sheriff's station is lower than satisfactory. They have received $12.8 million towards homeless enforcement, whatever that means, which could be used in many other more proper ways instead of deeming them all as criminals and thrown into the system. It should be allocated towards rehabilitation, mental health, and job placement for those that have showed progress. I am living proof it is possible to progress. If this is what you want for your kids once they have an opinion, by all means. But I speak up for not only myself, but for the ones who can't speak for themselves and the ones that one day will seek to have an opinion through free will.
Thank you, that's your three minutes.
Please take this into serious consideration, and please help make this right. Thank you, Temecula.
Our final speaker is Mark Laterno.
Mayor, city council, city manager, Public Works staff, Mr. Moreno, and city staff. My name is Mark Laterno. My family and I have lived in Temecula since 2000. I've had the opportunity, and I've taken the opportunity, to address this body on several occasions for safety, requesting consideration of reduced posted speed limits within community corridors of Temecula, including along Deportola and Yanez Roads. Several weeks ago, the posted speed limits were reduced, including signage, paint on the road, equestrian crosswalk, increasing the equestrian crosswalks and other actions to help reduce traffic speed, which helps and improves the safety in our city. Tonight's the first opportunity that I've had to attend, and I wanted to say thank you to the city, to city staff, and including Nick, if you'll please pass along to him as well, and also city leaders for listening to our concerns, for acting on the observations, and for reducing the posted speed limits, which help improve the safety in Temecula. Thank you very much.
That's it? All right. So now we're on to council reports. And do we have council reports? Mr. Protem?
I do not have a slide, but just a brief comment. I think our job as city council members is to not only implement policy, but to see how that policy takes effect once the policy is implemented into our community. And there are three properties within Temecula, affordable housing properties, that have differing numbers from HUD. So the percentage of the AMI, the average median income, to be able to qualify for those affordable housing buildings are different than the HUD numbers. And speaking with staff, it sounds like when those were implemented about 14 years ago, around 2010, it made sense. The city council at that time put in a 60% cap for the low income, because during that time, it was recession and rents were lower. So if they would have went to the 80%, it would have been the market rate. So it sounds like the decision at that time to change from the HUD numbers was a good policy, and it worked for many years. But I believe we've come to a time in our city and in our community where the percentage of AMI doesn't match the market rate of housing, right? If we went up to 80%, the 80% AMI for your rent wouldn't even come close to the market rate housing. And since that policy has been in place and it hasn't been changed or renegotiated with those properties, I believe it has created a gap between that 60 and the 80%, where if you make 60% and HUD says low income goes up to 80%, those properties still don't, they have to continue with the regulatory agreement. They don't go off the HUD numbers. And in the subcommittee meeting with our Affordable Housing Subcommittee, I just want to make my other colleagues aware that we met with one of the property owners of the affordable housing units. We are, it sounds like we are willing to come to the table, but there's a lot of steps in between here and there. We still have to contact HCD. The owners still have to contact their bank if they had to do a refinance. We still have to sit at the table with our city attorney, our city staff, and the owners. But I just want to make my colleagues aware that that is my belief right now, that the policy that was implemented 14 years ago and the regulatory agreement that was signed with those property owners for those affordable housing units may have been the best policy at that time. But as policies, they need to adapt to the changes in time, and I believe we are in one of those changes right now, where the market rate, rent, and the market rate housing has far succeeded the affordable housing, and it's created a large gap for the workforce. So I'm going to continue to do my due diligence, continue to do my research, continue to ask questions, and I'm going to continue to support the local workforce being able to live within the community that they serve. And I'll continue to fight for our local workforce, but I look forward to bringing something, hopefully in the future, to the council where we can close that gap that I believe has been created, just the economy changing and the housing market changing. And I think we, as a city council, as a city, need to adapt to the changing times. Thank you, Mayor.
So I do have a couple of slides, so go ahead and put up the first one. I don't know what it is, but... All right, History Days was last Saturday, and I took the time to go over and experience it, and it was, it was really cool. There was, they had a, like a mining wagon that came, and kids were able to mine for minerals. And so they had different type of minerals that they could actually pan for. And then there was a covered wagon with these giant Belgian horses that were pulling the covered wagon. And then we had tractor races, which was with these electric tractors, which was really kind of cool. The kids seemed to have a really good time, and it was, it was a very fun... I'm a history nut, so everybody who knows me knows this is kind of a fun day for me. So, all right, next slide. The Sunset Market is Thursday, so if you're feeling you want to see something a little different, and there's a lot of food sensations there too that you might want to come by and try, don't cook, come to Sunset Market and look at all the handmade items that are available at the Sunset Market. Next slide. Is there another one? Yes. So this Friday is the Halloween Carnival in Old Town Temecula. So it'll be here and all the way down to the fire station. They're going to have some activities down there too, but it's always such a great event. People come. We have a Halloween costume contest right in front of City Hall, which is, it's, it's so cool to see how creative our citizens are with these costumes. So if you've got nothing to do this Friday night, cruise on down to Old Town here, and you don't have to have kids to enjoy it, come down yourself, and I guarantee you'll enjoy it. All right, so we do have a Cruisin' with Stu. Now, this is kind of an important one, because we're getting ready to open the Ox Lane, I think in like a week or less, between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road. So go ahead and play the video. Avlin from Public Works, come cruise with Stu!
Mayor Stu, let's go!
All right, Avlin, so let's talk about the Ox Lane. What exactly is an Ox Lane?
In simple terms, Stu, an Ox Lane is just a freeway lane that connects an on-ramp to the next off-ramp.
So what do we expect this Ox Lane to actually do for the freeway?
Yeah. As an Ox Lane connecting the, an on-ramp to the next off-ramp, it kind of acts like a fifth lane. And in that area, people getting on and off the freeway have a much greater opportunity to do so.
So we know what a good partnership we've had with Pachanga and all the contributions that they've made to our infrastructure. They invested 2.5 million in this project, and we've got some other funding from...
Caltrans, even our sister city over to the north put some money in to cobble up that $9 million to make this work.
Perfect. So Caltrans basically said if we'll do the first connector, they'll do the other three? So what are the other three they're going to do?
So our project that we're sponsoring and that we're taking charge of is northbound 15 from Temecula Parkway up to Rancho California Road. Caltrans, very soon here, will come with another project to do three more segments, northbound from Rancho California up to Winchester, and then coming back Winchester, southbound to Rancho Cow, and Rancho Cow to Temecula Parkway. Of course, north of that is the French Valley Parkway project, so after all these are done, we will have great operations on 15 through the city.
So Avlin, we know Pachanga's been a great partner, so what projects have they been involved with in the city of Temecula?
Oh, for sure, Stu. Almost every big infrastructure project, the tribe has been there, helping us keep projects alive and bringing them to finish lines.
So Avlin, this bridge is built way before the Ox Lane was even conceived. So how did we make this fifth lane work with the bridge structure as it is?
Well, Stu, you're right. You want to make it work without lengthening the bridge. There used to be a slope that came closer to the road. We cut that. We drilled in anchors into the soil. Those anchors basically go around the foundation of the footing of the bridge, and that way it can all stay, and we make room for this brand-new lane.
This is awesome. This is an incredible Ox Lane. Well, thank you, Avlin, for coming with me and showing me the Ox Lanes.
My pleasure, Mayor Stu.
Thank you. And thank you for Cruisin' with Stu. All right. So look forward to experiencing that fifth lane on the freeway here very, very shortly. So we'll go on to the consent calendar. Number one is waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in this agenda. Two, approve action minutes of October 8th, 2024. Three, approve list of demands. Four, approve sponsorship and economic development funding agreement with Visit Temecula Valley for fiscal year 2024 through 2027 at the request of Subcommittee members Stewart and Kalfis. Number five, adopt resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual inspection report pursuant to SB 1205. Number six, adopt the City of Temecula Disaster Debris Management Plan. Number seven, approve transportation uniform mitigation fee, or TUMF, improvement and related credit reimbursement agreement for Altaire Development. Five, receive and file temporary street closures for reschedule 2024 National Preparedness Fair. And that's our calendar.
I'll move consent.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 3-0. I will adjourn in favor of Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I'll now call Temecula Community Services District Meeting to order. Madam Deputy City Clerk, please note that we are also here with the noted absence from Alexander. Do we have any public comments?
We do. We have one. Melissa Bourbonnet.
All right, welcome.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bourbonnet, and as promised, I'm going to pick up where I left off. Mayor Stewart, on September 24th, as you were talking about all of the exterior beauty of Warehouse, you also said that there are six, you're excited to share, that there are six affordable housing complexes with an AMI of 51 to 80, which is not something that Warehouse has. I just wanted to point out, and this is part of what I'm talking about, you shouldn't just be, the goal shouldn't be to just prove us wrong. The goal should be to really do the most you can do, the best that you can do. And as far as I'm concerned, you're just looking to insist everything's great. You talk about history. Brendan Kalfis talked about the future and what we could possibly do, what you can possibly do with the future. And, and that's what we need. That's what we need. It isn't just what Laurel and Melissa thinks. It's about the reality of the workforce. It's about the reality of housing. It's, it's a national problem that no, you can't by yourself solve, schwanky town, but you can make a positive contribution. There are ways, and it's not all about money. Okay? It's not all about money. But going back to those six affordable complexes, okay, so there are, but we just fact-checked with Luke Watson, and he said that there's a total of 42 units, 42 units in the city of Temecula that meet that threshold of 51 to 80 AMI. Forty-two! There's 110,000 people who live here. How many people work here? I don't even know. We've been trying to get those numbers forever, and we just get kind of, we just get circled or ran around, or we don't, we don't get cooperation. Surprise, surprise. But 42! That isn't a solution. That's better than zero. That is better than zero, but that isn't a solution. You said in that same city council meeting that you guys do a really good job. I would beg to differ, okay? But again, it's not about what Melissa thinks. It's about the facts, and the facts are that you have 42 units that meet the threshold of 51 to 80. The facts are you have 110,000 people that live here. They're all your constituents. You were elected to represent them, not just pets and dogs and schwanky town life. Represent your constituents, the ones that you won't even go see. You'll go to Japan, but you won't even go across the street. It's just, I can't believe you're not ashamed of that. You should be ashamed of that. So that's not doing everything that you can do. And as far as it all being about the money, it's not all about the money. You can discuss it, like Kalfis. Discuss it. Educate. Raise awareness. That's something you can do for free. That discussion didn't cost the city money. Okay? Raise awareness. Rezone! Rezone! Learn about rezoning and rezone. That's free. That'll make a big difference. Those are major steps in the right direction, and it doesn't cost you money. You just have to listen and be open.
Any further comments? All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to our consent calendar. We have two items on consent. Item nine is approve action minutes of October 8th, 2024, and item 10 is approve changes to New Year's Eve Grape Drop event at the request of Subcommittee members Alexander and Schwank.
Move of approval? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. All right, that passes 3-0. And just to sort of talk about item 10, I actually thought we'd get a question or two on item 10, but we're going to modify the New Year's Eve Grape Drop. So we're going to stop it a little bit earlier, but this year, we're going to do a drone show with the countdown. So it'll be the first ever drone show in the city of Temecula, so we're kind of excited about that. So kind of mixing it up, making it a little more family-friendly for our residents. So pretty exciting. Directors report anything this evening?
Yes, indeed. We have a few items coming up. Can you bring up the slides? And as the slides are coming up, I just want to emphasize that almost everything we do in community services, you know, at the blessing and direction of council, is free and accessible to everyone in the community. And there's no residency requirement to participate in any of these events. These are all open to anyone who would like to join in, whether you're just in town for the weekend or whether you've been living here, you know, since 1974. So, and that includes the new Grape Drop, which we're very excited about, as well as the events that the mayor spoke about earlier, History Day and the Halloween Festival. So we have, this Saturday coming up is our annual Rocktober event. This is a great event that gives kids the opportunity to compete in basically a battle of the bands. So we're completely booked up. We have 15 bands that will compete. It's a free public event. Anyone can come and watch these talented kids. Highly recommend it. And that is over at the newly renamed Ronald J. Parks Community Recreation Center Amphitheater. Next slide, please. Then on Saturday, November 9th, we have our National Preparedness Fair. This event was rescheduled from earlier in the year due to an extreme heat wave, so we're happy to be able to bring this on November 9th. And National Preparedness Fair brings a ton of resources for the community. Again, lots of free information. It's a big part of helping to make our community safer and more prepared for any emergency or disaster. So stop on by between 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. right out front here and get all kinds of information and resources to make yourself more prepared. And then finally, on November 11th... And then finally, on November 11th, we have another free event, our annual concert with the symphony, our patriotic salute to veterans to celebrate and honor Veterans Day, and that's at 6:00 p.m., again, here in front of the Civic Center, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot going on, as always, thank you. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Directors, anything?
Nope.
All right, we're adjourned.
All right, so I will call to order the Temecula City Council meeting again, and go on to item number 11, conduct public meeting to consider renewal of the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District and levy of assessment on lodging businesses within that district. Mr. Watson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight, as you mentioned, is a public meeting for Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District renewal process. A little bit of history, the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, otherwise known as VTVT bid, I know it's a mouthful, but was originally established in 2005 as the Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement Law of 1989. And at that time, the hoteliers assessed themselves at a rate of 2% for hotel room nights. In 2009, that assessment was raised from 2 to 4, again, on a unanimous approval of the hoteliers requesting that. In 2015, it converted to the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, or the VTV bid, as I mentioned before. It was formed under the Parking and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, but at that time, the rate remained 4%, and it had a five-year term. Back in 2020, the hoteliers and VTV came back in for the second renewal of the, of the assessment in district, with no change to the assessment of 4%, and then an additional term of five years. And so that brings us to the process we're in now, in 2024. VTV and the hoteliers have approached the city again to renew for a third term. The proposal is for, to maintain the 4%, 4% assessment on themselves, as well as an additional five-year term, which would begin on January 1st, 2025, and expire December 31st, 2029. Some key, key points about the VTVT bid, so this, of course, is the hoteliers in town, of which we have 20, agreeing and asking to assess themselves. It is not a tax or assessment on Temecula residents or non-lodging businesses. The 4% assessment that is, that is collected by the hoteliers is paid only by overnight visitors at hotel lodging businesses within the city of Temecula, so within the boundary. Visit Temecula Valley, or VTV, which is the ultimate recipient of the money, is required to use the assessment funds for sales and marketing to promote overnight lodging only in, within the boundaries of the city Temecula, and only for the lodging businesses subject to the assessment. So an important point too, and I mentioned this before, all actions taken since 2005 have come at the request of the lodging businesses, and have come with unanimous support from all of the, of the lodging businesses that existed at the time of the request. So again, the current request is, is nothing is changing, it's just a renewal for 4%, 4% assessment, a five-year term, with the same boundaries. Of course, the boundaries here, this is just a map of the city Temecula, just to reinforce that the, the benefit is for, only for the lodging businesses within the city boundary. This is a listing of all the lodging businesses within the city, we now currently have 20, and they have all requested this renewal. So the renewal process is a three-step process. So the first step, which is already coming on, which was September 24th, the city council adopted a resolution of intent to renew the VTVT bid. The second step in the process, which is tonight, which is the city council holding a public meeting, which is really, which has no, no council action, it is really an informational, informational presentation for the community and for the council to, to be noticed at, on November 12th, which is the third step in the process, third and final step, is the public hearing where the council will hold a public hearing and determine whether or not they want to extend the, the term. So, again, tonight is just a public meeting, it's informational, and there will be a November 12th public hearing where the, the item will be heard more formally. Again, if it is not renewed, the current VTVT bid term ends on December 31st. If it is renewed, the new term would begin on January 1st, 2025. So staff recommendation is, you know, this is going to, it's just more of informational, receive and file, no action of the council today. And that concludes my presentation. We have members of the VTV here, if you have any questions for them or staff. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Maybe, yeah, one of you guys come up and just give a little brief how this works, and how does it really impact our hotel community?
Sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff, we want to first thank you so much, we appreciate your support for, we turn 20 years this year, and this has been in place the majority of those 20 years. So what this money does, it puts an assessment, as Luke explained, onto guests coming into town, so it doesn't affect any residents, and we take that money, and we spend that money to market to a more affluent customer Sunday through Thursday. We're really not after the weekends, we're really after that Sunday-through-Thursday business to build our business. Right now, economic spend is $1.1 billion annually, which is just huge, and this is coming in from people coming to visit our town. 3.1 million people come in a year, so it's been really valuable. Hospitality jobs, there's 9,150 jobs a year. So this kind of drives an, an economic impact throughout, not just for tourism, but throughout the city and throughout economic development. People come and they visit here, and then they say, hey, this is a great place to live, we want to live here, then they want to move their business here, so it's really a cyclical effect, and again, we really appreciate the continued support of the city councils.
Well, thank you.
Any questions that I can answer?
No, thank you. You guys did an awesome job. All right, so we're off to item number 12, which, what's that? No, we don't vote on anything.
No, there's no action tonight.
Yeah. Item number 12, adopt city council protocol manual policy regarding budget, fees, and other fiscal matters at the request of Subcommittee Kalfis and Schwank. Miss Hennessy?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Earlier this year, the council requested staff to draft a policy regarding user fees to be included in the city council protocol manual. On October 8th, staff met with the Strategic Fiscal Services Ad Hoc Committee, consisting of Mayor Protem, Kalfis, and Councilmember Schwank, and presented the draft policy before you tonight. The policy summarizes the process by which the council reviews and approves the annual operating and capital improvement program budgets, and addresses the timeline for which city fees should be reviewed and updated. The city imposes several types of fees, including development impact fees, user fees, and other charges for services. Development impact fees are designed to mitigate the impacts of development activity and are updated along with the city's general plan. User fees are those charged to an individual or group who receive a private benefit from services provided, such as a homeowner installing a pool in their backyard, or a private development project. User fees are determined based on the cost of services study conducted by an outside consultant in conjunction with a cost allocation plan, which determines the indirect costs included in the user fee study. Charges for services include fees such as park rentals, aquatics classes, passport services, et cetera. The draft policy recommends that the city conduct a formal user fee study and a cost allocation plan every five years due to the scope and length of each study. This will ensure that fees stay in line with the cost of providing the services. Additionally, the draft policy suggests that charges for services are consolidated into a single master fee schedule and reviewed annually as part of the budget process. If approved tonight, the draft policy will be included in the city council protocol manual, as well as cross-referenced in the annual operating budget policies. That concludes my report, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Well, I just wanted to point out that these fees are not set by us, they're actually set by a third party who sees what it costs the city to implement, correct?
True. The cost of services study determines what the, what staff and all the overhead costs related to a service that is provided, it will dictate what the costs are, and then the policymakers will, it'll be up to the policymakers to set the fee, whether they want to set it at full cost recovery, or subsidize certain fees. Many fees that are related to public safety get subsidized to ensure compliance, things of that nature.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I will accept a motion to accept this policy?
Move to approval, second.
All right, it's been moved to seconded. All right, that passes 3-0. So, that being said, do we have any items for future council agendas? Seeing none, we will move on to the City Manager's report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we had a closed session tonight, but we have no action items to report under the Brown Act.
With that being said, we are adjourned.